You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
To order. Thank you. I will ask Beverly to call the role and read our agenda. Here. Here. Here.
Here. Here.
The agenda for our Swansea government board's investment meeting of August 1st, 2023 is as follows. The regular meeting of the Swansea government board of investment we held on Monday, August 1st, 2023 at 6:00 PM, beginning at 11th Sylvan Way for our site visits, and will be continued at 7:00 PM at W C Paul's Main Street, Swansea. The public may also access the hearing portion of the meeting via U by going to www.swansy.org using the new application of our following 929-205-6099 and entering meeting ID number 235-370-4380. And there's more information on public access to the meeting available on the town website at www.swanzenh.gov. Sightwalks 6:00 PM, 11th Sylvan Way. Call with order 7:00 PM, 17 Main Street, Swansea, New Hampshire. Minutes will be considered for July 17, 2023. Regional impact vote will be held, followed by public hearings. Z B A number 23-015, special exception application. Graz Engineering LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to section 5, Article B 2B of the zoning ordinance on behalf of Jameson Van Dyke for property owned by Robert E. McLean, 1993 Trust, for an 18-unit multifamily use at 11th Sylvan Way. Subject property is shown on a tax map 37 lot 22 in the Business District. Is it continuation from the July 17 public hearing? And other business as may be required?
Thank you very much. We have minutes that have been provided to us from our July 17, 2023, meeting. President, that was, that are here are myself, Brian, Ann, Lisa, and Jay. Can I initiate a motion on these minutes?
Move we accept the minutes?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of July 17, 2023, as presented. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
I understand. Thank you. Regional impact vote. Before we go on to that, I think what I'd like to do, since we have one public hearing tonight, I'm gonna sit Adam for Bill Hutwellker. I guess it's a five-person board, so seated for this will be myself, Brian, Adam, Ann, and Lisa. Now, regional impact vote. Does anyone here on the board believe that this particular application rises to the level of having regional impact?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion and say that this particular application does not meet the criteria for a regional impact.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks. It's been moved and seconded that are, there are no agenda items tonight that will be taking up that, excuse me, that rise to the level of having a regional impact. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate so by raising your right hand. Thank you. Seems like it passes. We'll move on to a public hearings. Public hearings, Z B A 23-015, special exception application. We're here for a public hearing. Graz Engineering LLC has requested a special exception pursuant to section 5, Article B 2B of the zoning ordinance on behalf of Jameson Van Dyke for property owned by Robert McLean, 1993 Trust, for an 18-unit multifamily use at 11th Sylvan Way. Subject property shown on tax map 37 lot 22 in the Business District. This is a continuation from the July 17 public hearing. Just to reiterate, I will seat Adam for Bill for this. This is a public hearing. We will ask the applicant to do a full explanation of what they're attempting, what they're, what they're applying for here. I know some of it was shared at a sight walk, but I'd like us to necessarily start from the beginning and have you give us information right from, right from the beginning. And then after that is, after the presentation is complete, we will, this is a public hearing, we will allow interested folks to provide testimony on this application. And we ask only that we keep information, I mean, we keep our decorum here. And that secondly, that if an issue that you've, has already been addressed, we ask not to repeat it again. If you have new issues, that is what we're looking to hear as we move along. So I will allow the folks to give us an explanation of what you're trying to do. As I said, we had a sight walk, but let's presume that there are many people out here that weren't there, have maybe not seen this. So let's make sure we're complete in the explanation of what you're looking to do. Thank you.
So my name is Dr. Dolphlin. I'm here with Brad and Mary, our representative of Jameson Van Dyke for the property at 11th Sylvan Way. It's located in the Business District, and we're proposing to construct two new, uh, two new multifamily residential development structures. Uh, an 18-unit first structure, and we convert the existing structure that is there into a community structure. And this multifamily development is a lot bigger than what's happening in the Business District where it's going. So you see, if I speak with those microphone people here, if you see here, this is gonna be a building along the back property line here, and that one of the new structures is gonna be alongside the property line there. Those buildings are about 132 feet long and 34 feet wide. They're each gonna contain three bedrooms. So there are gonna be 45 parking spaces for the parking regulations required. That's 2 and 1/2 spaces per unit. We're also proposing landscaping for a screening buffer around the post development, but there're gonna be archwayed trees around that square. Then there is gonna be a lot of loops, roots along that there. You can see, I do have the plan to probably do a trial.
Thank you.
There's a double dash, Dr. Dine, that runs more outside here. That all area that is proposed to be for stormwater infrastructure. So there's gonna be an installation basin there that's gonna handle all of the additional flow, um, side effect, whatever you need. The proposed entrance is gonna be about double that it is now, right down to about 10-deep line, it's gonna be 20-deep wide. That's sufficient to get a fire truck in for the actual curdulations. And you can see here that this parking lot does tee off. There, that would be for a fire truck, a pole lane, and come up here, that's kind of 45-foot turning radius for a 30-foot fire truck that's required at the way. They can drive up there, pull in, turn around, and come out with three trucks. We're proposing a sewer line throughout the middle, along with a water line, control of that water line to fire protection. These buildings are gonna be a sprinkler system that handles any fires. And we've also conducted a traffic study. So we were out there in the morning and at night, pounding cars and calculating, yeah, the limited surface of the existing antec down there and at 32 and Sylvan Way. And we're showing that it's gonna have a very negative pulling impact on Route 32 itself. It's staying within the same level of service, which is good here, and it's level and it's having a level, so it's a group eight, rather true. It is where, where that is rather paid. So these buildings are, uh, we have some images of buildings. They're similar to some other structures that are allowing them to go in the Business District, which comes under the, uh, hotel or emergency home page development. And there's also matches from even their color or their pattern. Those are shows, uh, the ultimate development that current position of. The map, it shows the, the.
There's one thing.
The red property on. This red property is subject property. These green properties around are multifamily developments that are in place. Notably, one of here on Route 12, there's a parkness up there. There's also a motel right near the roundabout on Route 12 Lake Street. There's also an electric complex up the road on Route 32, and those are all put in about an hour of sight. As far as the rest of the landscaping that's in, gee, not really clear where we're gonna be going through that property. So like, we're planning for it. These pictures that Troy putting out are of a project that was designed by the building being, being as a grid. It's the same, it's gonna be the same building pattern there with some of the landscaping, uh, with the exception that the roof line is gonna have a third floor, single bed. You can see that the reverse side of this. Here, so the three, the third story up there is gonna have a third bedroom. These buildings are 29 feet high, so that's less than the 45.
Just wait, we saw.
And the existing structure that's out there right now is 26 and a half feet.
Anything else?
We're gonna open it up to questions.
Well, we'll take questions from the board here, and then we'll open it up to the, to the public. Jay?
I know you did the traffic study, and it, it may be true that there's not much impact, but I'm a little concerned that the traffic study appears to ignore the fact that there are 300 units of housing going in on Route 32 shortly, and that will, and so that your study doesn't include the fact that there's already mandated additional housing on the, on the, on the highway that's gonna cause more, more traffic. So how would, I'm not sure I could even consider your traffic study valid.
That's, okay, I have a question for, you have a public.
It's the same, it's the same part of that question, is that you did your study in the summer, not when there's children in school. So the school bus that we heard about earlier, which, you know, is several school buses to pick up children are not, that wasn't part of the study. So it's not, uh.
Please, please, you'll have your chance. You'll have your chance, please. Thank you.
I also have a comment.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Comment on the traffic study? So you did that July 31 through August 1?
Yep.
And as Ann said, school's not in session, so you didn't have to deal with the school buses. I want to know how the traffic study addresses the fact that there will be maybe 36-plus children standing in Sylvan Way, at the end of Sylvan Way, waiting for the bus in the winter with the snowbanks, and possibly 18 cars lined up on Sylvan Way with the parents keeping warm, waiting for their kids to get on the bus. How does the traffic study address that?
The traffic study does not address school buses. It just.
It should address the Sylvan Way and how that will be impacted. I'm assuming. But there's no other place for these children to stand other than in the road on Sylvan Way?
On the road, yes.
And it, and we're talking at least 36 kids just from that development, not to mention the kids who already live in the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, so there'll be children.
So there'll be 40-some odd kids standing, and we all saw how congested it was with just us there. I think we need a lot more thorough traffic study?
Well, the, the, the O T is often, reached out to it, they want to discuss the very different areas. Look, the, the impact of a dig in on the public who is going in, as well as school bus. But as far as the double digging, road, I was able to say along the road is.
Other questions? Ann?
Moving on from the, the question regarding, I think we.
Hold on. Are you done with traffic study?
I'm done with traffic.
Can I interject?
Please.
So I have a question. So my question is, I also live on a dead-end street in this neighborhood. And if we added the amount of cars that are potentially going to be added, it would have an impact of more than 10 vehicles a day, which you're saying here is the increase of about 10 vehicles. Okay.
Basically, assuming that not all 45 cars are leaving at this time.
Okay. All right, Ann?
But during that peak hour is when those kids are waiting to get on the bus, and the parents are lined up on the side of the road with their cars running, keeping the kids warm. And there's going to be a lot more than 10 cars lined up on the side of that road.
Not sure what my L C T state of day didn't take into account school safety at all, or school bus pickup or that kind of thing when they did their.
Not so many of the parents that care. My pet dad will let me stand outside.
Non-traffic question.
I wanna, may I interject or request? It's still in the vein of traffic, so might as well.
Go ahead.
So I, I noticed, just like everybody else did, I counted how many cars were currently parked while we were at that site visit. There was about 18 vehicles. And that was 18, not the 45 potential that could be in that particular parking lot. Now, granted, when you showed the current width of that driveway, the intent to be stuff to, you know, visualize whatever it looked like, twice as wide, but about the same width as the current road of Sylvan, uh, Way, would that be?
Yeah, but there's gonna be parking spaces on the interior of the block. And that pavement is gonna extend all the way back to the, so that those trees are all gonna be coming down and have nowhere is gonna park. So if you look on the plans here, this dotted circle line here, that's the end of that proposed pavement that, while we're at a sight walk. So, and we're proposing to extend the parking lot all the way back here. So even past those, those states that someone who saw, that one of their department would be much, much larger than it currently exists. So there, there's 24 feet, the rail cycling violation, be able to pull up the way during a turnaround of a vehicle, and we met that on.
Well, I, I think my question is more onto coming from the proposed structure and the proposed parking law on Sylvan Way itself. We've seen as a board, many traffic studies on 32, you know, some of the recent ones you have mentioned here. And the state, I believe, at this point, D O T comes involvement as it relates to 32.
Only for 32. They don't do traffic studies on dead ends.
As it relates to Sylvan Way, who, who from our town manages the, would that be the oversight?
Yeah, Joe.
The O T for any, they follow it, uh, there is, but they also.
Okay.
Yeah, so for clarification.
I was, I was reading through them.
Yeah. Yeah, so for clarification, Joe would, and did correctly defer us back to the state.
Yeah.
Right, because that's a state-owned highway. Swansea has nothing to do with it. However, dead-end streets and side streets are not, there's no traffic studies on side streets and dead-end streets. Swansea doesn't perform them, nor do we have the equipment to perform them. So he wouldn't have any idea.
Lisa, I think you're up. Okay. Other questions? Oh, Ann, I'm sorry.
Regarding the, the third floor?
Yep.
Are those, and just because I'm looking at the, at the drawings, is that in the front of the, those are in the back of the building? So the third floor would be facing away from, towards the back of the property room?
I believe so.
And the left side?
Yeah, so the proposed building will be facing the wood line.
So the rear, okay, so there in the back on the, if you're facing the property, there on the left-hand side, facing the property line, and on the far rear, as far away from fire trucks as possible. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, other questions on the board?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I, I mentioned this when we were out there. It, the zoning regulations require you to have 44 and 1/2 spaces parking, and you have 45. But you also are gonna be required to put landscaping in the middle of that parking lot. And I don't see how you can get 45 spaces if you have landscaping in the middle of it, and allow turning radius for the fire truck. So can you speak to that?
Um, yeah, that's something we have to look at. There is, there is a 60-foot wide space there, and you only need 24 feet wide back there to run around. So basically, what we're showing here is that we do have the space for those 45 space parking spaces. We haven't, though, we didn't really go landscaping design yet. We, we might have to move some stuff around. Maybe close to the property line there, have a fire, a fire truck turn around, or I have some islands that fires, so we can get around. But there, there is plenty of, like, within the parking lot, right now.
I understand there's, there's plenty of width that you could put in some islands of landscaping and so on, but then I'm worried about the fire truck turning around. That's, that's my issue.
Yeah, that's, that's something we're gonna have to look at. But these buildings also all have sprinklers.
And, and the other concern about fire department is that the truck is not gonna be able to get around the backside of these eight, eight-unit buildings. So that means that fire department's gonna have to carry ladders around the back to get up to the third story in the windows. And we don't have a, a comment from the fire department around whether or not they could fight the fire here in the three-story building. Yeah, it's about water, yeah. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that in terms of hazard to, to people on the, on the property. But it's a marginal concern, I guess, for the zoning regulations. It just, just, it, it makes the, the proposed plan look a little bit, well, dull. I also wanna just state that I, I looked it up, and you're actually right about the patios not being covered as a structure. I, I read the definition and the.
Unless they're made of cement.
Really? Because it, it says it right in the back in the definition of structure.
I thought it was only if they're, if they're cement, they're considered part of the.
Well, I think it might be necessary to read that because it was a concern of, of the residents.
Yeah.
So.
I do have.
Julius?
Yeah.
Good.
So it reads, anything constructed with a fixed location in the ground, or attached to have some, something having a fixed location of the ground. There's a little more talks about how those sheds and gazebos, what we're talking about. Most importantly, it says items such as underground waste disposal systems, driveways, water wells, fences, retaining walls, gates, signs, lamp posts, mailboxes, blackboards, wall coverings, stairs, walkways, and uncovered patios are excluded from this definition.
Okay.
So that's, that's how it's determined.
Okay, so just a second, please. So if there are multi-levels, are there, are there multi-levels on these videos?
Pads, right?
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
And just for clarification, what do you guys propose in terms of what those patios would be?
Well, it's.
So it would be additionally all the way across the entire backside of the one continuous slab?
No, they're.
You're playing by the slabs, basically standard strip 3D. So the idea is for you to have a kind of like, man, or.
Okay, I see.
And my, my other question is, this is market rate housing. Is this what this is? Is this, there's no restrictions on who might live there, is what you're saying, what you're saying?
It's a question for who?
For the builder.
Yeah. So it's market rate housing. Okay, so, so there, there definitely might be children there.
Yeah.
Okay. And so are there gonna be, I mean, places for children to, to hang out, the patio, but not the parking lot?
So we is planning to do a playground, but the exact location of that is gonna be department, once we do a full stormwater attack. It's gonna likely be along this, probably somewhere here, but this place is gonna be based on residential.
I just, just would hope there is something so that children aren't out in the parking lot. Of course, I would be out there if I were.
Other questions from board members? It's not your only chance, but you can, you'll move to public hearing.
Julius, was the fire chief?
Go to fact, yes.
And he had no input?
No comments.
Of course not. Okay. Adam?
One last question for you guys, and then I think I've, I've asked quite a bit here. So, uh, we, Pointing Economic Development Department, okay, here we go, just trying to see. I have concerns, this is in our packet here, concerns, comments about the application as follows. Connections to North Swansea Water and Fire Precinct shall comply with the precinct's water ordinance. Precinct does not guarantee water volume nor pressure availability. Property owners should be responsible for any facilities, consequences on the connection keys required, potable water, and/or fire protection. There was a comment at the site that kind of referenced this, and I just wanted to hear from, from you guys. Do you feel there's a concern in terms of water pressure, or anything as it relates to water, or sewage for this particular application?
No, you don't know, I don't know, really, I have no idea. But there's, uh, wind structures, a booster pump, reduce the pressure, that's something that happens. If the blow is a real issue, which I doubt is here, then you do huge things like storage, water storage facilities, underground, and, I guess, expensive, so we hope that the flows are okay, which I'm guessing they're not, but they're.
And in that thing, would there be adequate, if that was a necessity, are there adequate space within this property to warrant a storage tank?
Um, well, you could do underground storage.
I understand, but it looks like the majority of this lot seems to be parking lot and/or.
That's right, I meant like, underground, the actual, under the parking lot.
Under the parking, okay.
Which, like, we won't contact. It's probably, well, there, where it's, we got, the buttons, the water, the, the showers upstairs.
Other question?
I'm one of the water commissioners. So will that be a wet or a dry charged sprinkler system?
I don't know.
Because that will affect the water pressures to that area. Nice.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
You'll have plenty of chances, yeah, so. All right, we're gonna open it up to the public. We ask that you, to the extent feasible, come to the podium and, and state your name. We would prefer this to be questions, not necessarily comments, per se, but as much as we can, if we could direct the questions kind of to the board, and we'll have the, the. We would prefer this to be questions, not necessarily comments per se, but as much as we can, if we could direct the questions kind of to the board, and we'll have the, um, the, our applicants answer those questions. So just state your name when you come to the, to the podium.
My name is Richard Alchee. I live on Eight Southern Way.
Thank you.
I recently moved to Southern Way, it's near my parents'. Obviously, it's, uh, growing. And that road is pretty immediate for me right now. There's an aisle of a trap on that road. It's greatly going to affect me and my nieces and nephews, knowing that they're not going to wipe that. Talking about all the traffic that is on here, we kind of go and talk about where this snow lane was going to go. If we have a one-foot snowstorm, that's a lot of huge pieces of snow that they have to move. I have great concerns about the storms. It seems like there are a lot of questions that, uh, we all have, that they have been unable to answer. I see that James's lawyers kind of, I think I have my questions here, but it, it, I, I think there are too many things wrong with this right now to move ahead with this. This is a small, dead-end road, almost like a bull's head. The way it's set up now is just about maximized for how many people can live on that road. And we're going to be adding how many more people and cars and traffic and water usage. There are just too many questions, folks. You can't allow this to go through like this. This isn't a main grad. This is, it's off thirty-two. If it was closer to twelve. Now, I could see how, how you as a board would be interested in the best interest of the town. I don't believe this is, I don't believe this is in the best interest of the town to be prepared. I have a lot of questions. My family living at the end, the amount of water that is going to be used, the sewer that's going to be used, drainage. My, my elderly neighbors across the street who are going to live this face that, face the, the buildings to the right there. Is all that water going to go on parallel? There are, there are too many things, folks, that I, I believe have not been walked on. If I ask you to not report this, not at this, not here. Not here. If, if they're truly altruistic, I think we should find a place for them to go. I understand what they're talking, but it's the wrong spot, folks, I would be worried about. Thank you.
Do you have any response to any of the-
Yeah, a couple of things to the questions that have been there. Well, the snowstorm is always going to be along that right side. If it's had stormwater, it really should, because the snow is going to come, and also the, the, and, and more of the downtown Southern Way. Uh, we're expecting it's eleven added AM each hour, plus a support in that in, uh, PM, eleven AM and four, yeah, each hour.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before Mr. Willak comes to the mic-
Sure.
Do you want to set the expectations of what our purview is?
Explain what we have to consider.
What we're allowed, what we're allowed to do here and what we're not allowed.
Would you like to do that?
It's good.
I want to make sure you cover what you're, I don't want to miss anything.
I think that a lot of the things that we're raising here, and some of it was raised by us as well, okay, because we're, we're you, we're members of your community, who live down the street from you. But there's only four criteria that by law we're allowed to visit and consider. We can have all the input we want, but most of what we're talking about really is under the planning board, if it makes it that far. Legally, we're only allowed to consider these, these four elements, and that's it. Anything outside of that, we're just not allowed to by law. So I just want to make sure that we understood that.
Sure. Realize that this designation, that's not a correct designation.
Yeah, so that gets into, to the zoning, right? And even though we're the zoning board, the zoning maps aren't charged by us. They're charged by the planning board, the select board.
The town.
Then, so it's the town, and it goes in front of the voters, and it's, it's, it's nothing to do with this board. I'm not saying we disagree, I'm just saying it's nothing to do with this board. We don't have any say in it whatsoever. But I understand what you're saying.
I think we can, I think we can agree that this is a district, being zoned is business.
That's the legal definition. We, we really- And that's to be, that's to be brought up at town meeting, that's the, and with the planning board in advance to try to make any of those changes. What's that?
On Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll be, oh, we're-
Okay, great, I appreciate that.
I, I do want to acknowledge what you're saying. We understand that's a business district, but there's houses there, we get it. There's plenty of areas in Swansea that are, I got to be careful, that are potentially could be changed to a different type of zoning, right? But Swansea has morphed over the years. It used to be factory towns. We're not factory towns anymore. We're, we're just not, so, but that's above us.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, John Willak, seven, four minutes.
Sir, can we pick your name, please?
John Willak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, traffic is certainly free here. And on three passion, from Swansea. Number one, traffic is certainly free here. Mondays and Fridays, in the middle of summer, have least amount of traffic and has no many banks, no matter where it is, because people take long, long weekends to vacation. Set my book on and did it. Traffic is certainly not moving. The traffic that you guys all just experienced coming out of there wasn't pleasant. In my brother, it's not a practice spot when they traffic bigger. It's just congested. There is a lot of traffic. Needing a new traffic study, that's correct, because what they did was change. On side one. Hold on.
Thank you.
My name is Carol, and I'm here to appeal. We live at sixty-seven Hill Compton Highway. We've been there for thirty-six years. The entire property of eleven Southern Way back onto our backyard. We live in a very small, quiet residential neighborhood nestled between Route Thirty-two and Stanford. And much that anyone's pride and airport has been reported. In reference to question number one, granted it's a exception, this is not an appropriate location for the proposed side of this project. And the density of this project, the multi-family units with required parking spaces is far too big for this neighborhood. The neighborhood around eleven Southern Lane is a redundant, three-single-family house with a few original single-family houses now converted to multi-family homes. Each one has a plenty of green space. The proposed multi-family structure with blacktop parking spaces would completely change our energy. Each unit will have three beds and houses that tend towards fifty-four adults, being adult and adult, or thirty-six adult, thirty-six children, two adults with children. Fourth event, one eighteen adults and seventy-two children, one adult and four adults. The pavement is a block store with five parking spaces picked up being the fire block with space. The units are rented to three adults, for a unit, fifty-four adults, where in the nine hundred and fifty, adults will park. With no public transportation in those parts. If the units are rented to families, and so these are fast as two, where are the children born? The side plans don't show any designated play area. And where is the green space for adults? There are no sidewalks along Route Thirty-two, back letting work with mine, and the road to the airport. Very dangerous for walking. Thinking about the ideology of it, much like five to acres will consist primarily of parking spaces and a paid blacktop. Where will the water go? Has the storm water run on analysis?
Oh, we haven't completed the, the houses, there, there's about seven thousand square feet worked with there, very flat, so I think it's, uh, not really all being said, so they, they were, uh, built on this. So I think it's a map that's all being said, so they do have to be built on this.
A little aside, we are on a vagabond, sand, pot, right? But on the storm water, it has to stay on this property, because it should not and cannot go onto adjacent property. Is there space for that? According to question number one, so the way is not appropriate location for this property to this park. Question two is really tricky. I consulted with a realtor was told that reducing the value of one property practically impossible, if proof of stuff that was involved to the real estate market today. However, size and density of eighteen units with forty-five additional cars and eighteen outside patios with exponentially basic noise factor in our very quiet residential neighborhood. Swansea loading regulations require a twenty-foot setback on side perimeter property. If the patios are part of the twenty-foot setback, and a bumper zone be created?
If the patio is not part of that setback, then it's not.
They're in, they're in that twenty-foot.
Correct, yeah.
Did they actually make the creation of surety brush?
Yeah, we're showing that here with everybody who can beat the law to run from the line of.
That much is a lot of them are mad at you.
They did the visual bumper, yeah.
Um, yes, this project, for question number two, would be loud, obnoxious, and offensive to large, but only building from Black Pop, but it's a quiet neighborhood nestled between the two in there. In the end, if like in three, if your deck of vehicles, vehicles with the death of it to the side of the project, there are forty-five apartments basically designated in the plan, adding forty-five more cars than Mark Swansea. How many have tried to get out of Route two and Route thirty-two? Route twelve, didn't they? How many have tried to get out of Route twelve and Route thirty-two? Even the new roundabout is okay, and just get behind the hidden driver on that. Yes, this project would, this size of the project would be loud, obnoxious, and offensive to large, because only building from Black Pop, but this is quite a neighborhood. And question number three? And question number three, where the house? Comment? The roundabout through there. I suspect the traffic study did not assess traffic from just four minutes. Well, nor on the speed limit. There are no sidewalks along Route thirty-two, walking, and others. Build away if the dead end street. Having forbidden something happens in the half residence that is being evacuated, add in forty-five more cars to be used after this. This project definitely has a negative impact on the neighborhood as well as potential for it. Question number four, addresses adequate and appropriate facilities. If I plan to not indicate a specific play area for children, they're proposing to put it on top of a water drain here. That up on there? When it smells, where will the pot smell? Somebody else already said that. For potentially fifty-four to ninety additional people living on the site, the trash area seems quite small, because it's no extra space for it. And maybe other than the sign, there's no charging speed stations or high-speed electricity in this site. So I would say that what I answered question number four, a multi-family housing project needs a designated play area for children out of the trash, knowing the little area as a storm water. We adamantly urge the zoning board to deny this request.
Thank you. Just a second, just a second, just a second. I just want to make sure if there's any responses you might have to anything that was stated before we go on.
Just the one she mentioned about the traffic study, that was done from seven in the morning and then before six at night, or three at midnight, so it depends on what's in the future as well.
Thank you.
And also the playground, obviously, on top of the very, it's going to be design with importance of the very structure. So wherever the main structure is going to have to go, the playground is going to be next to it.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. Appreciate your patience.
Great question. I live on seven way and at the very end of Zone One, you did it. I agree with the board, there is four questions that basically you have to answer to whether or not it is proposed. The first one I have issues with, the purpose of use similar to one of his surrounding areas. I believe I saw a document that used my property as one of the references to a multi-family development and that is correct. What we have is basically a accessory document through the backside, which is my daughter's house in the form. That is not a multi-family development. It doesn't fit the criteria, and it doesn't fit very badly with any one. Good? That was my first issue with it. I think there's other areas they use as reference, but it's not accurate, because those are coming off of Route twelve or Route thirty-two. They're not coming off onto Zone One or eighty-five to go. So again, I don't think that their presentation is accurate to the property that the proposal was associated with. The second one, such approval would not reduce the value of the property. I think the planning board, for the start of the top one, the developer could get me a letter from anybody saying it won't. I could draw me a letter from anybody saying it will. Basically, that's up to the board to decide. Personally, I think putting a hundred and eighty people on that small property in an area as Darby developed as a residential area would cause a value drop in the property significantly. It's a nuisance or a serious hazard to vehicles, but not pedestrians. I think we talked about that at O'Dash, but the bus stop was a good scenario. Again, anytime you're adding a hundred and eighty people to the existing neighborhood, there's going to be potential for instance, add forty-six cars, that's more cars than there are right now on that property, on that community on Zone One. The fourth, adequate and appropriate facilities to provide it by the plan. I think we've seen a couple of them right now. Stormwater, stormwater is really an issue with a retention pond. So if you have a lot of water going into one area, it's going to be a retention pond. You're saying you're going to put a playground next to a retention pond, doesn't seem like a research, a safe area for that, in my opinion. Again, some of these issues we bear to the planning board, let's just say right now. On the proposal, I don't see any empty spaces in their parking area. That makes an extra room than a shared parking space. So I don't know if they are thinking about that, if it's going to be an ADA compliant facility, that's another issue you look at before approved. Believe it or not, it's all that I saw on this point, which the plan is far.
Thank you very much. You can come back. Anything to address? No, hang on, hold on a second. I'm going to give them the opportunity to answer anything that was said before. We've done it every time.
Comment as to the map showing different areas that are multi-family. They're color coded, so the yellow is a lying of our two dwelling dwellings, and then we know that's not multi-family, we're just trying to show the different uses in the area, and that they create a multi-family.
So he's talking about the yellow one that's to the left of the red, and that is one family.
With an ADU.
They have an ADU, which is.
Correct, and yeah, so it's considered two dwelling units.
It's not, it's not, not multi, it's great.
Well, it's two dwelling units, as he said.
Same family.
Um, no, not necessarily.
In the same.
Yeah.
And I also wanted to, I was sorry to interrupt, we're a day break, you guys know my background, exactly, my experience, and I have a negative.
Thank you.
What was it compared to? Question?
Go ahead.
My student's hair. Thank you. Well, I still have a couple of questions. First of all, on the location of these kids, are they in the way of building about how I am?
I don't know.
Building engineering, oh.
Between this one, the one going up over Route twelve, and then the big one going up by the line, are these all built? Wait, listen, it's all filled up. You know, with the need of housing, we keep hearing there's needs of housing, all these people that are homeless, they're really talented. Where are they? And where are they looking for them? Where are they looking for them?
Janus should be able to.
And they're living somewhere.
I can hear the answer.
I don't think that the zoning question, if we did, if we did, no. I have a statement, well, this is part of the, the bag, it's table, so we're not paying all this time, because I don't think, I don't necessarily, it's really exciting, I don't know, he though, he said, that's just what they're out there saying.
Okay, okay, we're going to do one at a time. If you're in the audience and you want to address anything, you can come up, like this young lady has right here, to address the place. No comments from the gallery, it's not good to call.
I understand they'll live in the, but I don't understand that we're being built because of these, all these people that need housing, all the crazy, but yeah, this can't find help, there's no help in this restaurant, or, or all the people. And where, you know, they must be living somewhere, but anyway, that's too far, so those aren't built up yet. Once they, all these, all these places that are big one up, and yeah, it's built, all these people, how's our staff in the third form of this force that's running, are involved? Are we good there? And how about the fire station? Do you have an environment for all of them? I don't know, please just question them. I don't think they're, answer that. They won't. Um, I guess that was it.
So Sue, I'll let you know that I hear you and appreciate your comments. Obviously, to this point, some of that really doesn't have to do with the germane nature of the zoning board, right? However, I will say that, you know, the other four big complexes that are supposed to be built, they're still stuck in politics in Swansea. I don't know what status they're are, if they're ever going to happen. So I'm just giving you that. As far as the staffing, police, and fire, that's, I have no idea. That's a selectmen question.
Will you be building a dorm school and staff in all future?
Well, we are not building more schools in Swansea.
All right, that was my answer.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, I'm sorry. Could we just move the presentation a little bit, Walter, so we could kind of see where the.
Going to move that up, you mean?
Yes. So what I said, we could go, see where the apartment is going.
I'd like the board to tell us things that you should see.
Yeah, we're good. Yep, right on. Go ahead.
Hello, Jim, come in, please. G L I M E N A F A. I don't know what, how far you guys are in line, if there's like two hundred fifty, three hundred more to hang there than what the same thing you guys are doing. And that's fine. But if you've been downtown eating four, six, five, it's a rat race, West Street, rat race, many accidents. I'm just making a point, is how many that are coming to this area. And as Sue said, he misses understanding the ambulance, swans. What point is, there's one over there, I would say, the wireless, the noise back there is going to be like two hundred. So at one o'clock in the morning, we might want to have the toll box, because only one officer available on Swansea Police Force, so you're going to, so somebody gets let out, because now we got over three hundred, so people run out, this can't, for you to do there, doing work out, who's going to go to the rest? Then you work the whole street, no one's standing by. I work for the ambulance, one's over there, and they're all busy, and you need to sit there. They need the last in line, who's going to have? I had a mission for myself. They said, well, that could be, it's going to be the last one to get rest, was very not good. So I think that's very important, I don't know, if anybody, anybody, all these people who are building these places, you can think about how much traffic is going to be dealt Pulling out Route twenty-two, five to Route twelve, okay? That line's going to go all the way, some way. Maybe it's, it's like, and it was a pain to try to pull out Route twenty-two. That's my point, it's going to be, I thought that the ambulance, response, the police response, and the fire department, and I believe we should have had transit police, public and fire department, and ambulance here to answer a lot of these questions, and everyone who votes, and you do know what's involved in ambulance, you look at the records, and nobody called ambulance there, it's just been classified, controlled, and confined, and police fixtures, it's going to be out of our heads. I think nobody's taking that as consideration when you're building all of these buildings. Let this go, it'd be interesting, or stop this thing. Maybe I'm sure it will happen at some point. Now, each of the rearrange, rearrange, we make it one, one, one way, this way, one way, not the same. That's not going to be good, not going to be good. But anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've got one more question.
I think there's someone new, I think? Then you can come back up.
My decent, I'm working, I have the property, but I can't do this, well, the gentleman, four hundred speed with all the windows, most of the money I paid for my property, it's a farm, very short cars, I still have to say, I hear from the owner, I care that. I was thinking, they had, they're flying wrong, because when I talked to the planner, Sarah Hall, she said, that's a bad problem, so I went and asked her, I made a spiel, gone through the whole street, and I could look at this plan on our street, really look at two things, and I can give you a copy of the light, you're not going to break it down, you're going to, that's, that's good. Apparently, that spirit's far, that's my whole, it's just a shop on the joint, it's just like a shop, see where people were. She didn't know how far the old people were going, and that was she, like, one story. And so I'm going to, it's going to be like a barracks or motel, what are we looking at? And so if I was in the military, so I've seen some barracks, that's what I trained out of. I just missed the scene of the, what I was saying, hey, the capture, and the other capture. My daughter, she asked me, if you go up the street, that you had seen that one, what that's dead? Would you avoid the house? And I said, no. There was a, there was a total forest behind it, why don't you tear it down? That's a sponge back there, that's, that's an fire, if you shoot, it just blew away. They wanted, gave a pair of those, put a pardon on, way down is minus five, and the people, so I would just get it as a kindergarten area, all the stuff people talk about, environment, but this is what they allowed to have, and it just shouldn't be, everybody knows it. I have a kid in school, I, I got a, that's why I was too good for finding out, so it's good job, can hide, the vocational standard, I was teaching, going to the same, it's border culture. There was a kid who I referred to, well, I know that now is an adult, and he's coming when he finds, I said, you were the only teacher with the very other honest, so he said, and I know I was a good jerk. And then we've been having discussions, and he said, and they related something very personal, and that was that, there is no such thing as the gray of it, where all these people want paint everything, it doesn't exist, there was only right and there was only wrong, that's it. And he said, look, the gray of it is, it's wrong what women are doing. And that's what's happened. We're going to choose.
This is good. So, does it have memory?
Yeah. Yeah, that was good.
We have, we have the.
Yeah, this is, yes, he might want to call. Speak up a little, I think. This room, this room absorbs your voice.
Is that the same?
Yeah, it appears to be, but there's different. Hold on a second, hold on a second.
We do have a map, a package, we received a memo from residents, so we have this map, I think you should have that.
We have that map.
That's not the map, okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's not it?
No, I just wanted.
Yeah, and she handed them out. Okay, go back, if you would mind, so everybody could hear them. Thank you.
The reason why I need that map is because the maps that I would give it like Sarah with this, but it doesn't show the whole picture.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
If I may.
Yes.
We do have this in our package. Could I just refer to the gentleman, so we can?
Sure.
It's light. That's the attitude.
We did, we did hear Steve, I just want to play.
That's fine.
All right. So anyway, I walked out of there, Sarah had a different, I think, I had another, I see that this is built with three stories now, three stories, that's why I'm talking about it.
It's two-story, and that there, the player's back in the line.
So there are just top story, so they're going to be facing my property. So if they're going to my property, yeah, I can think to sell my house for the same amount, I can count that. I lived in, as we're partners for fifteen years, we had two daughters, and the only we lived there contained, the wife was a former Swansea community self, so Troy Police Law, so managed, another town that might have been, that was small. My wife walking on David Avenue, said, they're taking it out, police took them out. He had a less, this is true, he says, he had that kid for summer trip, with a boyfriend to make. He was a former police officer, I saw him, he had, but he hadn't come to our building at the time. He's doing thirty-seven percent of the kind of pretty, down the city from that part. Then next story was, me and the guys there, and this girl who were selling drugs, and she had just graduated from King's Day with a degree in drug rehabilitation. And we went away for two and a half weeks, that was the location of our property, and so you're going to have possibly a hundred and eighty people here, you're telling us we're going to be subsidized housing. At eleven still playing, music was glaring, I went out to the guy, and asked him to carry it down, he was carrying my stuff, I would smile, so I knew not to injure anybody. He carried it down, for about a week or two later, he was taken out, he was a felon, he was a flyer, he was arrested. One day I come back my hour, and there's a young buck out there, taking over the sand and some tools, and he's pulling down the door between two trees, that are on my property. He was not put a pit bull attached instead, and I said, those are my trees, you can't do that. And he walked away with his handful of tools. He was, his job was he was a prison guard, but he was going to attach a pit bull here, my two little girl here. Another tenant there bought a pit bull over Monday to introduce it to my daughter, was the other woman, and she used to suffer the terror. And everybody said, still doesn't have, doesn't have. It's dead for the first one. And once he got somebody to sit back here in the bed, they, somebody came in at night, I saw it was drug, other drug dealers, and it was a big place, they come to us, and it was furniture, and it was, it was nice doing it, it's good. So what were we to expect from him? And then he has three stories, the other was facing my property, white man, a cop, who got arrested for that. He was doing good, he was changing his handle, he was doing some things, and the other, he was the same. So you can see how ugly he looks. That's concussion stuff, but as far as this goes. But as far as this goes. The proposed is similar to what we're, it isn't similar to anything. Unless you're going to go start forming saddle and or an alley here. This is not similar, okay? A person that's out, shoot, there's, there's street parks in Mexico. This is eighteen year old stuff. So, so forgive the similar, that's just a, life problem here, the language. Here it's supposed to be almost inbound and down. When something on here says obnoxious, they just, just wants to look things, enjoy, it's not a story. It's not, this summer, we have had to talk, my, my daughter and my son, my son all across the street. And we have had to talk to the garbage distiller place because I'm speeding down Silverway. And they readily admitted we have a problem with this guy. They talked to, they go, post office with the young women was doing the same thing. They readily admitted they have a problem. There was another one that came in. But the last one was really good, because it happened this week. They took a delivery in a piece of furniture, and they ran into our house, or rented their house. He knocked the truck up and then almost hit the house. So if you out paid it, just tell them without feeling, you don't even know what it is. Look, try it. They're speeding, and now, these fellows might have forty five vehicles in the place. And they're going to walk, he says, but it's all okay. Hell, hell, gentlemen. I don't know, that was the gentleman I saw taking a strategy study. You're going to serve it. You're going to, gentlemen, bring the fight on. So we have those, everybody on the street, the sound. And now, if you take the ministry number thirty two, you go back to the quadrants, it's eleven, so twice. Two hundred eighty seven to the end. If you got forty kids out there, like, we're hearing. They're going to take them soon. And if there's cars, well, we can, that's what they'll take them soon. So we got two hundred eighty seven feet, you got eighty four feet, or fifty feet, maybe sixty feet, maybe more. And then you got five feet between the cars. So they're going to, what, come out of the left sill, and like this, and turn right, drive down the street, get in line to the way out. The guy doing traffic study, I don't know, I'm telling you, my house wasn't built by a car, there is still my guy. The guy doing traffic study was a guy with a pen and pencil, sitting in my best friend's home. This gentleman here said, I guess, I don't know how many times I've heard, I guess, right this, this stuff, oh, there. I guess. If you're, if you're training to build a building, you should give it to, have the information. How, how does that work? I guess this, and maybe it'll work out, and think about it on that playground for a weekend. I think I heard you say that there was an open slate that started the training. Are you kidding me? This is a mosquito behavior.
You're all, you almost experience on mosquitoes back in the woods, there only wall that there.
Well, he's going to have a mosquito car on the property. Does anybody listen? Hearing anything about this? Or am I just calling the wrong parts? These words on this paper, obnoxious. Offensive, injurious. That's all very, very problems we're going to have. And the problem would be working, not having a common feeling. But they should have the property property steal. Because they mean something. And if it's offensive, it's going to be offensive. And it is going to be something we all want to deal with. And we aren't stupid, we know the stuff that's going to happen. But they just stroke, stroke and stroke. And they think, well, they don't like what I'm happening about it. Well, I'm not happy about it. And they aren't happy about it either. And it's time someone started listening.
And I believe I'd like your tone to be a little less confrontational to the board members here.
You are, it's hard to, it's hard to do. Okay, you're, you're the board. And why, why do you say you're supposed to be working the town's job?
We have an ordinance that we have to, we have to follow. It is the town of Swansea's ordinance. Right now, you're in a business district that'll.
Saying that, but these words keep saying, obnoxious, offensive, injurious. And so those words don't mean anything, but the one this district just means like everything. I don't, I don't know, I guess, I guess I speak a different language. But like, like what you said to me, there's a lot of, in the gray zone, it's just a swamp, we're going to do it anyway. That's really not right here. And it seems like something about the fire right there, and my experiences, I exceeded. The first fire was a twelve year old, like, this blocker gave him a quarter gallon of gas on him to accelerate the fire on the grill. And he accelerated it. The second fire was a dumpster fire, a big one. The third one, I don't know whose squad did it, it starts. Because I smelled the smoke, I went up into the woods, and it broke the line, some of the cylinders. Somebody camped out, and the wind was blowing this fire. And the flames, the empty little tree ready. When I blocked that, I ran down, radio, there was fire, they came. By the time I ran down the alley, it had quite a few lit fires. So my concerns about the fire suppliers in that. And gentlemen, says thirty trucks over there. Thirty trucks are going in park, and they don't, they're going to move from, and there's something other vehicles coming. And people all around, and they're holding cars, what do you think, you're going to, you're going to guard them? You're going to have thirty five, thirty six adults out there trying to clean the car. And then people still running, yeah, those are murder, you're not going anywhere. You can't get out. So I mean. The words here, let me say, obnoxious and injurious stuff. These words, which is evil on here. And this is just, you know, where the, several people are going to make money. That's what it's created. Yeah, they're making money. I thought they were losing money, so they're running the street. Looking to sell themselves. Where I grew up, they had a chain of turners, and they called it blockless. I asked, I said, I asked you a couple of people, and they said, what's that? Well, that's what the thing that projects like this, people get disgusted with the league. And you have to sell it to the world, so they lost the block. And some people think that, because they think what they call churning or something other. They take it and turn the property over, they're going to turn it over. And a lot of people, I've heard this, I saw a churning of one of the world. I went up and talked to this guy, I'm going to take it, I'm going to take it. Just run right out of the chair, I'm going to take it. I said, how many times has that come, it's lower? They didn't give me that information, yes. They were turning property, by this treaty, the tenants. They really got kicked in the air. My nose, my nose, my nose. My daughter, she went, what the fuck? So there's a lot of stuff going on. But this project is not very, it's still going. It's still going, it's still going, they have a lot bigger than this property, where the kids and rent is now. Because many people live in, their playgrounds are in the street, it's going to be so large. All those kids in the street, right now, there's two on the rescue, you saw yesterday. And I don't know, I can get around two. But can't get around this very far. And what are we going to be saying to me when I say, could you bring it to me? I don't think there's any response to me, very slightly. And I'm interested to get a lot, because I've told schools, sixth, seventh, eighth graders, for twenty years. And I like students. You ask me, but. They can see who's, and everybody's hearing them. And it does have, even worse, but they. What will be my? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
Just wait.
The gentleman here had no chance to respond to anything that was just stated.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. Just hold off for one second.
You guys had to respond to, to be fair to.
The previous.
I apologize for.
Thank you, thank you.
Just a, a couple of quick comments I have, is saying that it's not similar to any developments in the area. What you also have to look at there is how similar it is to developments that are allowed to be right in the business district. Like a hotel, for instance, being allowed to be right. And it's, for instance, being allowed to be right in the districts, or these buildings could be built. But the identical footprints that are around, and just not the multi-family residential. They're performing more to the areas by having them to be residential units, and be something of a purely business, just like a hotel or something like that. And then also, um, he gave you that map, the, the model, you do have the model review map. Um, shown on the plan here, it's required that these multi-family units be fifty feet. Many existing residential structures that are covering the district. And we are, we are showing that surrounding buildings of that property are showing that you meet that fifty foot setback apartment.
I have a question on that.
You'll need to identify yourself, please.
Kristen Chesley. Um, you're saying, oh, I'm Kristen Ches, Chesley, what do you want in?
Chris Kowicki.
Chris Kowicki, O G R S P I N. Um, you say you have a fifty foot from other Christian property, you say Mark, the next door wanted to put an accessory to all of his property. You would no longer be, so if he, his use of his property, then? He's asking.
This is based on the existing structure.
Well, as long as he meant the setback.
Well, what's the fifty foot?
Fifty, fifty foot deep from the proposed building.
Any existing structures, right, or what if Mark wanted to put accessory?
He would, as long as he doesn't put it within the setback, side setback.
Okay, so the fifty foot would come in to?
No, oh, no, that's, he's just claiming, he's just pointing out, I believe, how far away he is, that, that these are being proposed today.
I was wondering if you're involved that, that's some kind of relation.
Yeah, the buildings have, if you're proposing to be multi-family, they have to be fifty feet from the dwellings that are currently there, surrounding.
That's, that's a requirement for the site plan regulations, so the site plan review that, that's, that's why that matters? But you're asking post, say they do, say that it wasn't approved? No, it wouldn't.
The California space is for, for living, right? Where, how many, this is your apartment.
That is.
The spaces are just.
No, I mean, there's three spaces. Going out, that's designated for your apartments. Say, Joe Spoh at seven P P wants to have a birthday party for his daughter. Invites, kind of friends. That's hitting kind of cards, where are those cards going to be? They're going to be on the side of Silverway, which is already too small for two vehicles to drive there. So, the other question, I don't see anything for a fashion service on the site plan.
Square, what's that one, that's?
I'm going to go there.
There's two houses, yeah.
We've been on script for a hundred, we still for a week.
It's, they're just not, we're going to help tomorrow.
They've got, who is? I mean, you know, that's a test, you can have a right. So there's going to be trash all over the ground, which is going to wipe, scum, beggars, rats, vice infestation. Where are they going to go? Everybody else's houses. And with that, there, the whole top lights. If you're in government, basically, you probably can't see the solar air.
Just address the, you can address the board here, please.
Have we had this gentleman?
Just, just address the, if you can continue your comments, address the board.
I wouldn't have stayed with your fifty five years. There's never been any problem with anybody. Now, if you want to manage, if you want to destroy an entire community. This road, the whole man's staples in place, there's barricade, not enough water, not enough sewage flow. And the traffic. I mean, you can't drive a pickup truck and a delivery truck down this road against each other. Somebody has to pull over. So now, like I said, with this, somebody on a birthday party. Now, because somebody's birthday party, which is fine, I'm not against it. I'm not going to be making out of my road. You know, because people who are on both sides of the road. So now you've got a traffic thing. Anybody needs an ambulance, fire. As far as water providers, we have one hydrant at the end of the road, at the end of the line. How much pressure is in that? I understand they have sprinklers system. But that's going to draw more water, away from the existing water, going to that, thank you. So now we have an eighteen unit building on fire. People trying to get out of there, the fire power not being able to come in. I mean, I totally admit, this is not the place for this. They could go buy a ten acre somewhere and develop their own property. So as a resident of that neighborhood, I'm a hundred percent against it. And any of my neighbors I've talked to, or surrounding neighborhoods, do not feel this is appropriate. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to follow.
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that the board received the letter, the package, as a, as a community, or some way, put together, the honor signatures. And, and one of the comments, since the advocate brought it up, saying, let's look and see what the regulation allows. This is not a, they did it over there, so I can do it over here. Every proposal passes or fails by its own merit. That's all we're looking at, is this proposal, not Apollo on twenty two, a proposal on twelve, any other proposal, this proposal. Does this fit the environment that was being entered in the proposal?
So there was a question asked about an hour ago that I don't think you had a chance to address. Uh, and that was handicap parking spaces. I'm assuming you have them, because it's state law, so I'm, I'm assuming you've covered that, yes?
We don't have any, your comment.
Um, isn't ADA compliance for multi-units?
No, it's not, actually.
It's not?
You do not, no, you, you don't have to put ADA in a, if you, if you were a business of some sort, you're required for handicap parking. If it's, if it's, if it's residential, as I understand it, there is no requirement to put specific handicap parking spaces in your, in your.
Okay, so I know that we're splitting minutia, so let me just run that to ground with you for a second. And you go this way better than anybody here, probably. Um, so if we're talking that this is a business, then we're claiming that it's a business district, and that's what we're going as the premise for the allowance of this. Is this not a business?
It's not a business that allows the public in. If you were a convenience store, if you were a.
Okay, so we're splitting hairs.
I don't think so, I think it's, I mean, because, you know, in, in the, in, you, you may have to, I mean, everybody could be handicapped in, in the place. I mean, you, you, you run into problems when you're, when you're trying to give person, you know, that person that, that handicap spot. But for residential use, for purely residential use, you don't need to designate handicap parking spots.
Okay, I stand for it, thank you.
Why, because you said anybody could be handicapped, do you think some people are?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying it's, it's, it's just not required, be, I mean, you, you could, every one of those spaces could conceivably be handicapped. Neat, you know, you, because you could have, they could have eighteen handicap people living in this, in this.
Do you understand the verification, so a handicapped person?
The verify, the, the what of the handicap?
The needs of a handicapped person.
Sure, I think I think it. Well, I, I, I know how, I, I've developed seven hundred and fifty units of, of multi-family housing in the two counties. We've never been required to put a handicap space in, in a, in a multi-family environment.
And I just, I've asked for perspective, sir, we all do respect. But there's going to be a percentage of people that you can determine will need handicap access. As you, as a builder, you would know that, that what is your, what is the percentage that you run into?
I don't calculate percentages, but I can tell you in our senior housing developments, roughly fifty percent of the people have, could get a handicap placard.
Okay, so you.
And then you don't, you don't.
You know, it's not that many, it's probably not going to be that many, because.
Well, you asked me, so I guess you know better.
So would this be fifty percent?
I have no idea, I have no, I have no idea. It all depends on who, who applies, you never know who's going to apply.
You just say that as.
I would say most people, because this is a town home development, you're not going to find too many handicapped, physically handicapped people, who are going to want to go into this kind of an environment. Because it's multi, multi-story. of an environment, because it's multi, multi-story.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying, but still, there has to be, you know, there have, there'll have to be ten percent spaces that have to be verified themselves.
Not in a residential use, not in residential use, right.
Okay.
If it was a business, he would be required to put a certain percentage, depending on your square footage of your business, I believe, but in a red, purely residential use, with no, with no commercial uses on site, you don't have to put, you have noted marked handicap spaces.
Oh, sure.
You're up.
Sorry, just, um, another question. I'm just hearing my man here, so if there's so many empty spaces or built in, and the spaces are allocated, I'm guessing there must be visitor spaces somewhere, or you decide somebody's gonna have to leave, or somebody's gonna have to leave, I'm just asking that question.
The spaces over there are just based on the zoning requirements, so this is about-
So, if apartment one is, like, I have space one and two, spaces on the side?
Uh, that-
Things on the on.
In our project, we allow each unit, uh, two cars, so that would allow extra-
So, then there aren't visitor spots somewhere?
Yeah, but the edges.
And I just thought, well, that's low, and all that, really?
Oh, that.
That's low.
In, in Ridge, uh, we allow, sort of a certain weight, I want to say it's like twenty, twenty pounds, they have, they actually want them, not because there's extra cleaning and, you know, allergy cleaning, stuff, and things will grow.
And then the charms play around, yeah. Spot, the wolf, the dog, the cat, whatever, in, where they're on, it's like somewhere, or children, I understand.
This site is, um, you know, it is a smaller site, so I think they would have to rely on parks primarily.
You're letting people-
Blocking dogs.
Please, please.
But I do, we said, we provide a playground, like, I don't know, do some, seeing just picture here, but, uh, this is a playground that we provided in our project in Randish.
We're, we're, we're along the path, you show where that looks.
Uh, for playing, yes.
None, well, just point it out, just point it out where we're-
There's possibly to be, so, yeah, because we're not allowing any stormwater, hopefully, yes, we don't have a big, these structures are gonna be, where they're gonna be, but there's possibly gonna be space down here, possibly around the back here.
So, everybody neighbor is gonna have to smell, there goes waste, because it's renters, and they don't care, because it's not their property, so there'll be ten pounds of dog shit every fifty feet, and all these people with the property have to smell, all the nice grass even from-
The residents should be- The residents should be responsible for the dogs, obviously, that is not-
Everyone will walk through key. People do not care when the dogs smell, as long as it's not on their property, and when it's rental property, people do not care, because it's not their issue.
All right, so let me ask another question here, will you be planning on having onsite or, or offsite management?
Or waste?
For the property?
Property management.
We, we have a property manager, um, in-house already, with a manager, so there's not somebody living on the property, but we, uh, we source outgoing escaping, outgoing escape persons, property management, so if they're adopted, necessary, and facilities being there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a second question, I know we're on the head so much for, you know, thirty percent of the human, that I can actually, gonna be able to handle all the residents. Um, yes, director.
It is an aid, I, it's pretty big.
And then, okay, I don't see a, for any of the parking lot, that's the real, very likely allowed, maybe try to start to pull in back. That's about like fifty feet, really, for a child, it's vertical, and if those parts block the trash, they're gonna, I'll pretend you're not allowing that, so that's, they're gonna be able to win better.
Yeah, so again, that's something we're gonna have to look at, or say there, or if there are, maybe some fire.
So, it's just like, I mean, it's intended, but the stage was needed.
Right.
And then, also, with the water pressure, are you gonna add any load, outside is gonna be, um, they'll lose water, she'll have to lose the water, you know, seeing the door.
The water, yeah, for your water pressure.
Well, I'd be interested, sorry. Yeah. Maybe as well.
Yeah, definitely.
And it'd be, and it'd be, and it'd be, and I can, I might be adjusting. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can peel, like, white?
I said, I'm not.
Can peel, yeah.
Thank you.
My wife's been really aware, thought it's a real property lot, is this development gonna be closed by a fence? I would have fun with the master opening, uh, to be like, would insurance, green, people, etc., against that on my property.
A big po, yeah.
Really, right, yeah, that's, I have to do it.
Someone else?
Is there gonna be a play on the top, there'd be, uh, waste, uh, right next to the dog stures.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Nick Wiscott, I live at thirty-eight Silverway, L E M I G.
Thank you.
So, this, this property was proposed, the use of this property was proposed, is not similar to a business nearby, and not only is that not true in the, in the legal sense, but in the legal sense, there are currently, there are meetings that will only be made in that, to consider, you know, whether that should be, whether that business district should be expanded or contracted. Approving this would potentially create, create, what the dog. Approving this property would be obnoxious, because it's putting a whole bunch of people in a neighborhood that's not very good. It would put a whole bunch of traffic on the street that does not have, the traffic, you know, has not been honestly examined, they examined Route thirty-two, not, so, not Silverway. There would be a nuisance presented by putting all those cars, as people said, when people visit, which they will very well, and we, someone will be visiting someone every weekend, there're gonna be cars lining all down the street, you can barely get to regular sized park down it right now, if it's trucks, you gotta pull it aside, I don't understand how it should be possible to normally navigate that street if there're people regularly parking on the side. Children who are waiting, who are possibly get arrested. As for adequate and appropriate facilities, that's most hard to say, how much tax revenue such a development, bringing, whether or not that inevitable need for an increase in leasing or fire services, but I have my doubts.
Thank you, but not. Anyone else?
Just one last comment, since you just completed, applicant process starts, again, we're actually-
Yep.
That's all right, I can see the person, will you?
Chestly.
When we asked the applicant some of these questions, they said, allow me to reduce the planning board, that could reduce the wage rate. That's correct, in the reduced planning board, to see if it's sufficient, but we have question number four, which goes to, is it currently adequate to be passed? So, just keep that in mind, a lot of these questions, we haven't been answered, goes to-
I'm John Streeter, I have a company, Streeter, Street E R.
Streeter, thank you.
I have a women's flying company, and I've done projects like these, Lebanon, Rattle Road, Divert, all this stuff. I got them all done, I saw the reaction of the neighbors, I wouldn't want all of these next to my house, and I feel for all these people who have it next to their house, I had one guy come across the street, help me in Lebanon, I asked him not to build that there, and now they're looking right at me, it was on Eder Road next to the hostel in Ghana. Anyway, that's not just that, they renovated houses in Rattle Road, I had seven houses to do, they renovated all these old, decrep, whatever it was, decrep. Houses in Rattle Road, and they refurbished them all, and did kind of what we're trying to do here, but it's really spused up the neighborhood, anyway, I'm gonna go eat.
It's all to you.
Well, yeah.
This is your one.
Yes, I-
Anyone else care to provide some testimony, some comments?
I have another question, but we've asked a lot of questions, we've asked for information, they have not been able to provide that to us. Is it that facade adequate application? How will you get a hold or determine without having all the information and all the facts on this stuff to go over, reach out and inform? We're not sure, we don't know. This is what they do for a living? I don't know, my dog, I don't know, oh, well, maybe we do this, I get tired. So, how can you guys make a judgment without the proper information given to you of the people of your town, that's being placed in, and they're not providing any information about any of them? Doesn't that, that play a part, how you guys make your decision, the information you're given?
We have it, we have a packet of information here, we've heard testimony, we've heard, we've heard a lot, I'm not saying we're gonna answer this or not, but the board here will take up the questions that we have a responsibility for taking up.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Monup?
Excuse me.
Sure.
Go on, go on.
Willet, he was up earlier.
I know, oh, yes, okay. You know, I'm all right, on Silverway and thirty-two.
I presume, yeah, presume you do.
You, you yourself warned the board in two thousand nine, that if I came up with enough property for my neighbors, you couldn't stop me from building whatever I wanted on that property.
If you say so.
You're on board, I'm good on the city now. I had less than an acre, you said if I had, an acre or plus, I could put whatever I want to, you know, and I don't hear boots for four hours, this is an acre and an hour. Now, two years now, is that white house that's on that, is gonna get demolished, you know, stay another nine hours in there, because once they get what they want, is that all they want? Get after something, it's, I was gonna expect myself, so, careful, I'll stay.
Thank you. We will consider closing the public hearing, so that that point in time, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, you love that, so?
John Rannigan, senior partner, I, it is.
Thank you.
I'm a part of the, I'm a part of Chadel, and I'm a part of the Rogers to this law of state or the nation. I represent over, definitely, these counties, which locally needs, I represent-
And here, of course.
Yeah. And, just to let you know, Chesterfield, Instale, Peterborough, Mason, Norfolk, all usually local, local communities are all my clients. So, I think the board is, there are a lot of information, lots of climate issues, and, you know, I think those are entirely, lots of interesting issues to present before, but they're not, here's what the chair has already mentioned, with the board's view of this application. And where I got involved in this project, I mean, I read the recent Supreme Court was a, a, and, uh, capital development court versus Swanson case, and I think we clearly have reported all professional information facts, that it's provided by engineers, that it was provided by, it was made professional, the dead experience that, uh, competent was satisfied with all requirements of each, of the, of the, and I understand also that, you know, with respect to housing, or, 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 related projects, similar projects in the district, we've got, you know, page, I said, project, and also, you know, the, uh, four, four, three, four, five, I changed, another, four, five, six, seven, which are the thirty-eight year project, thirty-eight year project, which are probably responsible by the bill, so there clearly are comparable projects in this district that are clearly addressed, uh, so, I would encourage you, if you approve, uh, this based upon the criteria that you have, and then the next step will be certain. Question, I would just like to hear what you have to answer, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah?
I don't, I don't know if you would answer this, or perhaps you could, um, just this evening, so not in our packet that we received Monday, but just this evening, we got a, uh, a letter from the Formup Foundation, um, which is a professional opinion, certified appraiser regarding the proposed development relocated at the property, and I don't know if you've seen this.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, on the first page towards the bottom, it, it says that the proposed development will not place any undue strain on local government services, and local roadways will not have noticeable negative impact by limiting traffic that the development may produce. And in this sentence, sort of concerns me, it says, the surrounding property uses will benefit from the subject development, and the subject will, the subject will fit in well with the existing improvements with other nearby parcels. I don't see in here any examples of benefit, so when I read, I mean, I looked, I read it about the market demand and supply and design and aesthetics, I mean, I've been through this, but there's, there's just a suggestion that the surrounding property uses will benefit from the subject development, but there's no express benefit listed, we're just curious.
I can't, I can't, what, if they can hear this, respect of that.
Yes.
But I'd also say that, that it says the expression, you know, the governor, the employees, the state, they, they, because, you know, I represent so many, at least by the shores, we, and, and school departments, can't attract and retain new employees to support those organizations.
Well-
And the main reason of that is, did you know on the old housing event?
So, and, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, 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 this, but, the benefit that seems practical to me, because I've been involved with developments for eight years, is that in this neighborhood, we have people who own houses, the idea of introducing rental houses, they could stay, because somebody has my kid, kind of, kind of lived down the street in the apartment, there's all kinds of, you know, benefits, of course, something on that to be, and be available, so, and that's my, that's my professional experience, is how, how the benefit is for that.
So, I'll, I'll say, I'll say to you, Mark, because you compensated this person for this document, so I would, I would say that, when they're, if they're going to express a benefit, they should demonstrate, I'm just saying.
Well, well, I agree with you that it's not- I agree with you that it's not, it's not precisely giving up the issue.
Correct.
But as to the opinion, that it will not reduce the value. There's no question that that is not.
I, I don't, I don't find that detrimental.
Yes. Certainly. None of the, none of the professional information that we sent to the people on all these issues has been contributing to point in professional information in this area.
Well, I'm just, I'm certainly saying. It, it's incomplete, so. Okay. Thank you, Billy.
It's a Formup, Harding Jameson. The, the Zephan Jameson. Okay. This is, it's Formup. So it's written on the half of the second.
So again, just to rebuttal the, the words on it.
Wouldn't you come up, wouldn't you, if you wouldn't mind coming up here? Because we may have people that are listening.
I see a governor at the, our six o'clock meeting to look at the plan. So he can talk about what the government wants, portable housing, so on. I can tell you in Chesterfield, I was chairman of planning for the, the properties that went in, that development that went in. I was against that at times. They said portable workplace housing. These, these buildings are now being sold for almost $500,000 for a two bedroom unit. If he thinks it's gonna be affordable, if things are gonna be housing for, for people to come in, this is gonna be another three, $400,000 apartment that is gonna stay vacant for a very long time because we have so many developments in Swansea that are going forward. They're not quite in their development stage. It's gonna be going forward. And again, I just think that the, the town should rein back a little bit of the development on thirty-two until some of these projects get going or even get finished. See how it's gonna impact town, the services, the traffic. I mean, there's just so many things going on right now that I think Swansea is big getting into trouble with if they allow all these private development offices.
I'm, okay, this is Van Dyke.
I love you.
Van Dyke.
Oh, actually. Thank you.
Yep.
And I have, my, my brother Jared is my partner. So we grew up, we grew up in Ridge and my father was a developer. And we grew up building these projects alongside him. And we watched many people. I'm not from Swansea. I grew up in Manhattan, drove there for four, two years. And I've been through a lot of projects down there that we developed in town. We've got a lot of pushback from people there in town. And everything that you guys said tonight, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking at it as something to laugh at or to have any disregard for. Just wanting to know that I, I very gift. And you guys have your, your side and your opinion. You've lived there for a long time. It's a tight neighborhood, obviously, this group that's here, which I think is awesome to have in mind these days. We simply look at this project, we present it to us as a really good zone. It, it's getting tougher and tougher to build housing these days with the cost of money. You know, with the mortgage rates and the financing and the inflation. Inflation is driving, you know, how we're through ninety percent of the completion area, you know, problems that we're dealing with today. And that isn't getting checked. And whether, you know, the cost of food and everything else is getting checked. But I just wanna share a quick experience. So we showed just a project in Ridge. It's about a year and a half old. It does the list, build a lot of them in town. They're hugely successful. And we're not in Ridge, a couple of projects. We did happen to have a couple of work for housing units that we required. And that's turned out very well. We've had zero, zero incidents with police coming in and doing a public stunt. And this has been extremely respectful. This project, my office is in the law of this project. So I'm in and out of it every day. And we don't have any trash around. You know, if there, if there is a piece, I watch people walk their dogs early around a building. They'll just circle around. We'll pick up the trash and throw it away. So the, the cost of those units at Ridge, we run it out for eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred a month right now. Yeah, there's a hard single moms there with a kid or two. But there's also, there's also young couples. We have three coaches there, Frank and Pierce, who had to travel an hour and a half each way just to get to have Frank and Pierce to coach each day. And they were ready to quit. And the miss came in, the athletic director called me in. They were able to place three of these things. There's grad students that didn't have housing. Frank and Pierce, it's about a thousand for them. We don't have any issues with parties or anything like that. We have a very strict roster management team. And we set a lot of rules and guidelines that we have learned from my mother. Her, who had been in the business for forty years. We try to really vet out the tenants because we don't want to get all the issues. We don't want to get phone calls from you guys complaining about issues. We really try to do our good intentions on that end. And our projects have been very successful. And the people that had pushed back a lot were, you know, the landscape back at Southern Ridge was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Now playground costs from thirty-five thousand is built. Those are extras that we, we put in just to really have a nice product. We wanna leave a legacy when we build these projects. Not coming into this to build like as cheap as possible, affordable, like a lot of those guidelines. And I hear about my backyard, on lines for sure, because it is the night that you're having a change, it's difficult. And I agree with my mom. And I do build in my backyard. I literally build in my backyard. But this housing has, has really provided for a lot of good families and new people. We're visiting. We are one point eight miles from King State College. So I can see it, you know, building a, a relationship with maybe the athletic director there and some of the coaches and some of the, the professionals that work at my college or in this community. They're, they're looking for housing. Because we get our list, I don't have a list yet, but it doesn't give us. It doesn't have a stage. But our project in Ridge, for thirty days to fill out, you know, literally it was full. Thirty days, soon we could put it out. So thank you for, for another time.
What do you know the rent fell price?
We, we did one year of this in Ridge, which would be the same idea.
Well, I can compare to you.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying like.
Oh, the lease?
The lease. Well, the lease is one year. We're trying to hold as long as possible. We have a five year mortgage, you know, commercial. Our rate is large for five, but after five, if rates are, are higher, we'll have to go a little bit with, just to cover our mortgage payment.
Okay. So we don't, we're not making sure.
Yeah, we're not trying to develop or anything like that. I think if you're joining the workforce.
What was that?
I think if you're joining the workforce. Well, some of them are already, in my example, that are out of the workforce, but they're ready to leave. Like Tresor County in, in the last decade, believe it or not. I know it seems crazy because I heard your comment about downtown theme and West Street. And I agree with West Street. And then Garloff calling in a month ago. They're very busy. But the demographics in Tresor County, they're actually declining in population, better not. They're actually declining. And the, like, what John was trying to say earlier was, you know, people are leaving Massachusetts. I do a lot of work in Massachusetts too. A lot of the young professionals and stuff are leaving the colleges and they're moving elsewhere. And the population that we're getting in are a lot of times like unsold around caring individuals. So the demographics are actually changing. So even if we're at a break in our population, a lot of our skilled, trained workers are leaving to the city or, or down south.
Your property in Ridge is that tiny small Den End Road.
I'm already, I'm sorry. It's on, it's on, it's on a state.
And the, and the major roads is probably appropriate. We're not a major road. No small Den End Road. It's not appropriate, folks. Don't let the fact that you're selling me exclude you from doing the right thing. This isn't appropriate here. It might be needed. Jameson might be, might be, you know, with all due respect, they might be right that it's needed. But it's not there.
And one thing I would say, you know, we decided to continue this. We could do a more traffic study. Absolutely. It does a major concern, which is, I mean, here's the key, there's a parent. You could look at it, the bus pulling into the property, pick up the children on the property or have a turn for them so that you not park out on the street. John, it's like, we have a lot of them on the property. Do these kids line up? We would look at, maybe a job like that would be seven things to do.
Well, it wouldn't be us. It would be you. It wouldn't be us saying, it wouldn't be us saying you do this or, or, or we, we, we want, you know, want you to look at that. It's gonna be up to you. If you wanna, you know, extend this meeting and try to address some of these concerns, that's up to you.
I would like to, I would, I would like to address the, the concerns. I would, I would like these guys to die at the be burning really. What you, what you guys, what you guys have all the neighbors and some of your concerns as well. Do you want to meet us those, you know, one more line?
So we heard. We ju, we just need your name.
There's been a long time. Hang on a second, wait. And there's been a lot of talk about all these other things. What we're here tonight towards, to answer the four questions, whether or not they should be allowed an exception to, to the rule to build this. And I think we have sufficiently answered each of your four questions. No, absolutely no. There, there is nothing like this build on a Den End Road. This is definitely going to cause a nuisance and there are safety and other issues. I think this should be denied. Thank you.
Adam?
Point, point order. Am I understanding correctly, the applicant has asked for continuation? My, I'm summarizing what I just heard, but could I be, could I be more specific or?
I, I take them with any, with the twenty-five PK here, we've invested three hours, so.
But that's just something we have to take into consideration.
Right.
The applicant has just stated that they would like a continuation.
Yeah, that's not, that's what it sounded like to me. Sir?
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna talk to John.
It's just something I think we'd have to address to be able to move on.
At some point, yeah. I just wanna make sure we get through this area here.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I would, I'd be guys both, I, you know, address all.
Okay, so.
Richard Algen, I don't, I don't think there seems to be a lot of answers to questions.
Which is? He said he would like to.
Yeah, just wait a second, but we.
He said he would like to.
We've got a member that's not seated. I don't want Brian on. Presume he went to the.
The not supposed to.
To take up things that are planned.
No, it's, we're just gonna wait a second. We're waiting for a member to come back. I, I presume he's using the restroom. I don't think he left.
Yes. My name is Anne.
Just waiting for Brian. Brian is not here. Again, I don't think he left the building.
No.
Okay.
Part just speeding down the driveway.
Who knows your air conditioning?
Yeah, huh?
It works well.
Thanks, Mike.
It's so much time is already coming down.
Thank you for Brian.
Yeah, that's what he said. He wants to do it. We'll take it up for the planning. He wants us to go in four quarters.
Think this way now. Then, then it could be off, then you could help people.
No, no. That's all right.
We didn't know if he left.
Give us your name. Oh, okay. Sorry. Thanks, Ed.
Not that anyone needs to be reminded of this, but I do remind you. We have over five hundred units coming in. We're gonna allow them halfway this already for John. And usually you can have eighteen more workforce housing waiting at that area. I should probably give this free.
Is that a question?
It's a statement. It's just, it's not five hundred units. We have those, we have that one.
I know a lot of those units will never happen. I'm not gonna get gone horrible, a lot of those. They, they all went to lunch.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, we'll not have a chance to add any more information. So I'm not saying we are gonna close it, but we're.
Will fire station be going in? I'm worried too.
Better question?
We don't decide that. Nobody, nobody knows.
No.
So what do you, Julie?
Anyone else? Before we close the public hearing, I do wanna, I do wanna, I wanna make sure with the applicant that we, we understand. It, it, we thought we heard you ask for an extension until next month to address some of these concerns. But then I think I heard not to, that you weren't asking, you weren't asking for extra time.
Do you, do you, do you guys feel as though you need the, like, a professional traffic solution solved away? Or, or, or can you rely on the deck that he sat out there? You know, and, and the summer is, you know, the summer is. And we didn't think, didn't consider it a school bus, which you have to act by vehicle or through vehicles. Which is foolish, you're standing in the street with, you know, my hair, so I'm asking for.
We really can't answer that question. You have to decide whether you wanna move forward with the information that's been presented tonight or whether you'd like to, uh, uh, an extension to gather more information and/or address it. I'm gonna have to call them. Yeah, we don't wanna drive an extension. And I don't wanna do that. Okay, so I'm hearing you, we're gonna move forward. Your, your decision will get moved forward. Okay. Is there anyone else has anything else to say before we close the public hearing? Okay. Very none, we'll close the public hearing.
It is not closed.
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 We closed the public hearing, that's right. Any questions or comments or anything else before we move along to the?
Just a general comment.
Sure.
And I think it speaks to the housing needs of the state and so forth. And, you know, we've seen a lot of applications in the last couple of years as it relates to this. And I think just as a statement, I think Swansea's toe in the line, you know, as, as a city, as a, as a town in New Hampshire. And so, you know, I don't think there's even what's been presented here by, by the applicant. This, this tells a story. You know, there's a lot of melting family units going in there. Just something I wanted to comment and position.
Jay?
I'd just like to remind all of my colleagues of what we got from a lawyer relating to the terms injurious, obnoxious, and offensive. And this is, of course, important because we don't wanna misinterpret those words. And so the.
Yeah, just ask, Mr. Chairman, I am not seated to vote, but I may comment on the door.
Sure, yes. All right. Um, question number one. The proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district and is an appropriate location for such a use. The proposed use is residential. Not multifamily, it's not single family, the proposed use, as I see it, is a residential use. So is the, is, and certainly I would be willing to discuss that with anyone, if they have another thought, but, uh, do we agree that the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district and is an appropriate location for such a use? I'm gonna start with Adam.
And just, Mr. Chairman, just quickly.
Yeah, sure.
I just wanna be clear on what you just said.
Sure.
So in terms of it being a residential use, but also being a multifamily.
Right, but it's residential, it's residential in nature is the use, and res, you know, whether, whether it's allowed in this district, is what they're asking.
Well, it's only a special exception.
But the use, you aligns as, let's say, places for people to live.
Residential use.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to a corporation.
Yeah, so, the resident, a store, or a retail.
Okay.
You know, business, so. Um, Adam, uh, do you agree or disagree that the use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district and is an appropriate location for such a use? The proposed use is residential. Not multifamily, it's not single family, the proposed use, as I see it, is a residential use. So is the, is, and certainly I would be willing to discuss that with anyone, if they have another thought, but, uh, do we agree that the proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the district and is an appropriate location for such a use? I'm gonna start with Adam.
And just, Mr. Chairman, just quickly.
Yeah, sure.
I just wanna be clear on what you just said.
Sure.
So in terms of it being a residential use, but also being a multifamily.
Right, but it's residential, it's residential in nature is the use, and res, you know, whether, whether it's allowed in this district, is what they're asking.
Well, it's only a special exception.
But the use, you aligns as, let's say, places for people to live.
Residential use.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to a corporation.
Yeah, so, the resident, a store, or a retail.
Okay.
You know, business, so. Um, Adam, uh, do you agree or disagree that the use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in the, in this district and is, is an appropriate location for such a use?
Well, I believe that this board's seen faces similar in terms of, of the use, um, you know, and actually within this area and so forth, knowing full well that each one of these cases is on its own, on merit.
That's right.
Application is completely only on this basis of its use. Uh, but as a use, multifamily and residential is an authorized use within the district under special exception, and, uh, the, the, the style of the use, so to speak, with the buildings and so forth, could be comparative of a hotel, or, you know, something of that nature, or a nursing home, uh, which are also authorized uses within the district.
Mm-hmm.
So from that perspective, I do think there is similar uses within the district, and the proposed use is similar, but as an appropriate location, I'd say absolutely not. Uh, I think the application to the appropriate location of this, um, you know, this type of use in this many, much traffic would require a much more robust road, and something that had access, you know, be a sidewalk, or some level of, of, uh, of access that was more than what Sullivan Lane, uh, can, can, can offer. So from that perspective, I'd say no. So overall, no.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, I agree with Adam, I think that, uh, the wording's not lost on me, authorized in the district, it's this district, it's not business district and any other part of town. Uh, so, is it authorized in the district? Yes, but the special exception it is. Is it an appropriate location? It is not.
Okay.
I think that there's been a lot of testimony that referenced the other properties, even by the presenter, uh, that are in the area that potentially would be built if they ever get out of wherever they're stuck. Um, but those are not on a dead end road, with a narrow road, and those, those are all, those are off highways.
Okay.
So, this location, I say, is not appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Lisa?
I believe it is an appropriate use, but it's very inappropriate.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
No.
Anne?
Not appropriate.
Anne?
Um, I, I agree that it is a, it is a use that's similar, and it, but it is the location, and in particular, the wit, the road, uh, is, is not appropriate for the, the size of this. There's, there's too many possibilities of conflict, not just between neighbors, but in loss of right of way, and it, and I don't think it's appropriate. I would say no.
Okay. Um, I'm concurring with most of the board that it is similar to one or more uses already authorized in a business district, which is what this is. Um, and I think it's really, it's a tough question for me about whether it's an appropriate location for such a use, but, um, I'm gonna concur here with the rest of the board that I, I just don't, I, I, I think it is, the you proposed use residential is similar, but this is, this is an interesting site, and it's difficult, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go along with the board to say that it's not, not an appropriate location. Two, um, do we agree that such a?
Do, do you, do you mind if I say something?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Um, I agree with the board, I just wanna point out that the use is, is approved by special exception, and that allows us to decide whether the location is appropriate. And that's why I think that I would have to vote no, because this is a, a narrow, uh, dead end road, and I think that it adds too much density in this particular location, even though the density is allowed by the zoning laws. I think this particular location is not appropriate.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Um, do we agree that, uh, approval would not, do we agree that such an approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? Brian?
Well, so this one's a pretty easy one for me. We have testimony, real estate agents, that property values wouldn't be affected, or, or reduced, or diminished.
Right, we have nothing.
But, you know, that's, I could find ten real estate agents to say it could, so I mean, that's a fungible testimony.
That's what we have in front of us.
So, uh, obnoxious, injurious, and based on the guidance that we have from our lawyers, uh, and the definition, I say that this absolutely will be, uh, offensive to the neighborhood, and, uh, certainly could be obnoxious, based on the amount of traffic and people, I mean, you're more than doubling the size of the neighborhood on one property. So, that's my answer, is no.
Thank you. Lisa?
I'm also a no. I agree it would be injurious, obnoxious, and offensive to the neighborhood. We've had a lot of testimony to that.
Okay. Thank you. Anne?
Um, I'm also a no for, for, for those reasons.
Adam?
This one's difficult to me, 'cause, I mean, we've, we have been, uh, given the definition of what injurious, obnoxious, and offensive means as it relates to the courts, and this is something that does give some level of latitude for those that are on the board to, to make a decision and to look at various, you know, testimonies to, to be able to decide what is injurious, and obnoxious, and offensive, but as the courts define it, uh, and at least the guidance that we've been given by the Supreme Court of New Hampshire, uh, injurious, obnoxious, and offensive typically result in the uses, the use of the property.
Right.
Not the, not the, what's, what the property's going to occur, so in, in, in a residential setting, a residential use is, is very difficult to, to, uh, obtain a injurious, or obnoxious, or offensive, uh, capacity to its use. So from that perspective, I have to say yes, that this would, uh, and, and as it relates to the not reducing value of any property, as Brian has stated out there, it's kind of a wash in the direction. Uh, I've heard testimony that it won't, but if we all, also heard testimony that people believe that it would.
Hmm.
So it's a wash from me from that perspective, but overall, I think the answer is yes for me, on this specific question.
Right, we have, we have no, we have no testimony that says, well, we don't, we don't have any evidence, I'm sorry, that says that the approval would, would reduce any value of the property within the district, so I, and, and I think that, that use, that residential use, is not by its very nature itself of injurious, obnoxious, or offensive. Um, it can be, but just by in and of itself, it isn't, so I'll agree with Adam in this, I, I would vote yes here. Now, um, three, will there be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? Lisa?
I believe there could be a nuisance or serious hazard to any of the children.
I'm sorry, wanting, any of the children wanting to get on the buses? Yes, I think there'd be a serious hazard.
You do, okay. Um, okay, well, we have to look at it in the negative, I'm sorry, so, I'm, in my phone. There will be, do you agree that there will be no nuisance or serious hazard?
I do not agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you putting up with me. Uh, Anne?
Um, I.
I'm sorry, I did hear Lisa's vote.
No, answers no.
Thank you, sorry.
Well, our, our site visit, um, helped me understand that the, uh, dead end road that Sullivan Way currently enjoys is by itself, without adding additional, or, you know, or without adding more traffic, um, people are already having a hazard with vehicles and pedestrians on that road, and I'm, I'm actually surprised there hasn't been more reported accidents.
Sure.
So I believe that, I believe that's a no, and it is, it has nothing to do with the application, it has, certainly the increased traffic is a, is a concern, but I think Sullivan Way is not light enough for the people who currently live there.
Thank you, person no. Uh, Adam?
Um, I would say that, you know, we have in front of us no nuisance or, so it gives us an or here.
Exactly.
Um, you know, in terms of, of a serious hazard to vehicles, pedestrians, is a potential anywhere for that to occur. Uh, but by the, the size of the road, the tightness of it, the fact there's no sidewalk, and then coupled with the increased use of that road as a result directly for the use of the property that's being applied for, I think that there easily could be seen nuisance or hazard to vehicles and pedestrians as a result of the use. So from that perspective, I would say no.
Okay. Uh, Brian?
So Sullivan Way's kind of a funny little street.
Isn't it?
Goes straight down, but then Sullivan Way goes off to the right, but yeah, it's a different road, but it's the same road, so, go figure. Um, so I think if we put a roundabout there.
Perfect.
Well.
Careful.
Um, I, I think, uh, that we saw tonight with the very, with the few vehicles that were on the street, that there was, you know, a cluster just getting off the street. Um, that to me was evidence of what it could be if you double the size of the population on the street, so I, I say no.
Okay. Um, just note that. Um, you know, to me, a, a nuisance is a pretty low bar, um, so I'm really careful there, 'cause it can just be an annoyance, um, and I think something annoying is different probably to you, and it would be to me, that could be the very same thing, but, um, I, I don't believe I see a serious hazard to various vehicles or pedestrians if this was approved. Um, it's a low, it's, 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 it's a, it's a low-speed street, I, I don't see a lot of that happening. I, I think that people have learned, and will learn how to, how to maneuver that. I'm, I'm a little concerned about just a nuisance, though. This, this for, uh, I think a number of things that have been said here tonight to us, um, testimony we've heard, um, a nuisance, a nuisance is a pretty, a relatively low bar, so that, that could be, so I, I can't say there would be no, no nuisance if this was approved, that's what we're approving. Sorry. I guess I'm in the no, I'm not, I am in the no category as well. Uh, last question. Uh, do we agree that adequate and appropriate facilities would be, will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? Anne?
Well, this is a question that revolves more to the planning area.
That's, but the zoning board has to deal with that.
Don't know if we would answer if there's any restrictions that we've stood on, 'cause I've heard from the applicant so many things that, that weren't addressed, and information that we didn't necessarily have a whole picture of. Uh, so for the proposed use, which is residential.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would think that with effort, adequate and appropriate would be provided.
Given the testimony you've heard, you believe it would?
But I don't think it's an appropriate location, so.
Well, that's sort of, it's a.
Okay, um, I guess, I guess I'll have to be a yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Adam?
I, I think the applicant has, uh, been thorough in addressing the uses and the facilities that be needed, the operation of that use, in terms of both parking, um, you know, proper, uh, sewage, uh, water, and all the things that are associated to this particular use that we've heard, uh, including, uh, waste management, and it would also sound like, uh, property management on top of that. So from that perspective, um, I don't see evidence that they, they would not, and have not adequately at least defined, uh, a path towards that. So from that perspective, I would say, I would say yes, that, to this answer, so yes.
Thank you. Brian?
I think appropriate facilities, they've, based on their testimony and presentation, sure, they, they've covered that, I think they've done a pretty good job with that. Adequate, however, um, you know, ladder trucks forty feet, ladder overhang, add another five or ten feet, you're not gonna turn that around in there, and you can't get behind the back building with the ladder truck, so. Water supply is a dead end, it's, it's deadheaded there, I mean, I just, I think it's appropriate facilities, yes, it's just not adequate.
Okay, so a no. Lisa?
I also agree it's not adequate. We don't have testimony that it's, that it would be adequate.
Okay.
Can I say?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Should.
No, not adequate. Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
I just wanna point out that the, uh, i- if we were to approve this, um, project, the, uh, planning board would then work with the developer to make sure a lot of these things would be worked out. And, um, I, on the basis of what I see on the site plan, I don't see how the parking and the required landscaping can exist in this property, the way it's laid out. Now, maybe the buildings could be reconfigured, maybe the, the, the whole architectural plan could be changed, but I don't see how the adequate landscaping can be provided, given the amount of parking lot that's there, and the site plan regulations that require ten percent of the lot to be there. So I just wanna point out that, uh, it's a, it's a hard thing to say, because the planning, if we were to approve it, the planning board would say, well, it's approved, the density's approved, it's, it's all, it's all done, we just have to work to make it happen. And I don't want that to go out of here, uh, with that, um, with that question, those questions unanswered, that I don't think can be answered. I think that's happened, that's happened before, and I don't wanna see that happen again.
Thank you. Um, I believe that given the, given what we've been presented tonight, that, that adequate and appropriate facilities would be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, so I'm a yes here. All right. We're at the end of our questions, I'll just give you a recap. Question number one, we had five no's, that it would not, is not similar to one or more uses authorized in the district, and it is an appropriate location for such a use, and I think most of the testimony kind of focused on the location. Um, second question was three no's and two yeses, um, that it would, uh, that it would not reduce the value of any property within the district, so those, those, um, three no's said that they felt it would either reduce the value of the property, or be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood, and I think we really focused on the latter, uh, not so much the value of the property, but the injurious, obnoxious, or offensive issues that the board felt. Question number three, we're all no's, um, we did not agree that there would be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and the fourth one, interestingly, we have three yeses and two no's, that's the only one that might have carried, um, relative to adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation. Um, unless there's some more deliberation, I think, I'd entertain a motion on this, from the sitting members. sitting members.
Motion Karasinski.
I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 23-015 special exception application that, based on our intimation that we have, that we not oppose this application, this would be a no.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have it moved and seconded to deny the application for special exception by Ann and seconded by Lisa. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate, raise your hand. Okay. It is unanimous?
The only other thing that I would say is that, to remind the board that for the next 30 days, we cannot discuss this case.
It is, that's right. From this point forward, the, the applicant can appeal, so we have to kind of zip it for, for 30 days until we get past that appeal. Here it in? Um, no. It's still right. Thank you. All right.
Make a motion that we accept a minute from July 17th.
Did we not take that in?
Yeah, we did that.
Oh, you did that already?
Yeah.
Oh, you moved that. Oh, well, look at that.
I got to move it because I was...
Let the dust settle here, then we'll see if there's any other...
We're looking for the zoning books, the ones that go from the state to for all of the members, usually everybody gets one, do we usually do like one in the office and share? How would you like to do that with the board?
I didn't hear a word you said.
So, sorry. The zoning books that come from the state?
Can we, pop, quiet down a little bit, please? We still have a meeting going on.
Thank you. The books that come from the state, the zoning books?
Yes.
Do you like copies?
He's here.
Zoning Board of Adjustment Handbook for Local Officials?
That.
No, not...
That's our ordinance.
That one might be right, the 2021 version, but there's a more recent version, 2021.
Oh, I thought more recent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I can get you a video.
Yeah, I still have the 18.
I would like the more recent.
Yes, there is, but that was to 2022, not to 2023. 2023 has the most recent. I'll tell you what those are.
Yeah. I would like...
Physical or digital?
Yeah.
Physical.
Physical.
Physical. And do you want digital? I can request one.
No, physical.
What, like a thumb drive or something?
Uh, usually it's, it's like a length of...
Yeah.
I believe we voted to start in September to meet at 6:30, is that true?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to be sure of...
Yeah, that's our next month. Thank you for reminding me.
I was going to ask that question. So we officially at 6:30 on Thursday?
Saturdays.
Mondays.
On Monday, actually.
Saturdays.
No, no, no.
Which still helped me, but I thought it was, if you want change.
Okay, we haven't adjourned yet? Ann, you have? Seven o'clock, you have anything?
Good number for me, but seven's a good number for me, too.
Seven's a good number for me, and, yeah.
So I have a question.
Is she? Go ahead.
So we did this for Sarah, and Sarah's gone.
Ah.
It's still a benefit to Jose Pablo over here. So do we want to keep it at 6:30 and move it back to seven?
Oh, what is, what do you think?
I personally think seven is a good time. I mean, a half hour doesn't help me.
Okay.
And it's nice to be able to do dinner when I leave.
Yeah, because I have to have dinner.
Yeah, I haven't had dinner either.
And I got... All right, so three. So no change. No change.
You know how that happens.
I would, I would like to say, I thought the move that we, now, do we have to publish this again?
Just a second, just a second.
Yeah, we'd have to republish it. It'd be the same thing that we did.
So...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have to, can we, do we have to meet at 6:30 because we voted we would meet at 6:30?
No, 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 no.
You can make those changes. It's kind of like last time, I made a motion to do so. We would have to renotice it, so we'd have to give a buffer period, so that's, I think what we did last time was two months, I believe.
Well, I, you know, so are we saying October will be at seven, but 6:30 for September?
That'd be correct.
Okay. So I would like to move that, starting in October, we meet at seven again.
Okay.
Somebody seconded?
Well, it depends, are we hiring Sarah back in October?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Not for seven, though.
We have a, we have a motion and a second to, to, to... Yes. To, to have our meetings be, continue at 7:00 PM moving forward in October. We'll have a 6:30 meeting in September.
Yeah, sounds good. Let's vote on that.
All right. All those in favor?
Sure.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah.
You just ruined his life.
Now I'm leaving.
Concerns to the public about how their community was zoned. So when we, and if it comes up, you just do not know, even within your own district.